She's gonna keep it up as much as...
What's that? Yeah, he's running the meeting and he's not gonna be able to see hands raised.
I can see it though for a minute when you had... There, I can see that now.
I can't hear him well enough.
We have too many people talking right now.
I think we're gonna have to have somebody else run the meeting. And none of our exec team is here.
Ryan, I can see if you leave that view, I can see everybody.
I can hear him.
Mm-hmm. This is not gonna work without him in the building or in the...
Ryan, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me, Alex?
Yeah, and I can see everybody, so I can see hands raised.
Oh, you can? So that won't be a problem?
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Okay, we'll go with that then.
All right, yeah. They don't... I think she's just gonna use that camera angle. Um, hopefully that works then for ya.
And we'll try a staff to let you know if somebody does pipe up.
Are we looking to zoom in?
Shouldn't be a problem, they're good.
Gotcha, okay.
So we just have to run the video. Okay. I think we're good, Alex. Thank you.
Perfect. Are we, are we, uh, on air yet?
Yes, it certainly looks like it.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission for July 7th. Start with roll call, please.
Buckey.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Coon. Lunskey.
Here.
Maticek.
Here.
Reichert.
Here.
Sandy. We have a quorum.
Thank you, looks like you have a quorum present. Uh, item 3-1.
3-1, ordinance to amend the zoning map, rezone to B3, general business district, lot 6, 7, and 8, block 59, Alexander and Ives addition, located at 702 North Washington Street.
Ryan, before we get started on that, I do have to, uh, have the minutes approved. Sorry. Is there a motion?
So...
Second.
Moved by Maticek, second by Lunskey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
Okay. Um, and I, I was just gonna mention, Alex, uh, since Alex is gonna be online, um, I think Greta is gonna be able to see if somebody has a question, he'll just raise your hand up and he's got a, I think Greta's got a shot where she can see everybody up front there, so. Apologize for the little, uh, change up tonight, so. Um, I'm gonna quickly go through, uh, the item what, that, uh, we're on tonight. It's, uh, we did preliminary approval last month, we're on to final. Um, the, uh, one change that was happened last time, this is for 702 North Washington Street. We had, uh, the one item here...
You just closed that so no one will be able to see it?
Oh.
Excuse me. Now, if I can find it. That little box can't be closed. Do you need us to rely on it? Nope. I just need to find it.
Technical difficulties, give us two seconds.
You just can't ever close that little box. If I can find it now. One second, I need to... It helps if you know the name of the technology as well, and, um, it just automatically usually does it, so.
Is it automatic?
No. So... I couldn't find it. It's okay. Where is it? It should be in here. Okay. Why don't you talk through your microphone while I do that?
So we'll, uh, have to reboot the computer, but this is for the area that was north of, uh, um, the Listen-Dropin Center. We dropped those two lots, or I think there were three lots, uh, two homes and the business, uh, that was Listen-Dropin Center. And we're just doing the business that's to the north, the former Forstberg Motors Lot, and that'll be what's on for tonight. It'll be, uh, changing it from B1 to B3 zoning, and it's just that one individual lot. We did mail out notices to individuals. We didn't receive, uh, any notice, but this is a public hearing and we'll have to open that up as well, but I can stand or sit, as the case may be, for any questions that you may have.
Any questions before the public hearing from the commission? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you have a comment on this, please come forward with a microphone. And I can't see the microphone. There we go. Does not appear that anyone's coming over.
Wait, Alex, we might have one.
We got one, Alex.
Yep. Come on forward, uh, please state your name and address and then tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Tom Hegness, at 1324 7th Avenue North, a block, uh, west of the Forstberg Lot. And I thought it was always B3, uh, that you've got business, uh, all through there to act as a buffer zone for your residential lots. And it's a natural, uh, buffer for Washington there, and I guess, uh, I'm in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Move approval.
Mr. Maticek moves approval, second for Mr. Coon. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, item 3-2.
Item dash 3-2, public hearing, conditional use permit for a contractor shop to be located at 1100 block of 6th, North 62nd Street.
Hi, everyone.
Dawson, go ahead.
I'm Dawson Ducek, I'm the planning intern. You've probably seen me in a couple of these, but this is the first time I'm speaking. Um, yeah, so 3-2 is a conditional use permit, um, for JD Construction. Um, you guys saw the annexation request at last month's meeting, uh, that'll be going for final today. Um, but it's zoned as, um, B3 out here, and it's going to be a contractor shop. Pretty basic, cut and paste from all the other contractor shops, um, except for, for this one. Uh, since 62nd hasn't been improved yet, uh, in the conditional use permit, we put in that they would have, uh, two years from the improvement of this road to pave it, so they can use gravel until then. Normally gravel isn't allowed in a B3, but since, you know, they have a gravel road, we figured we wouldn't make them pave their part until the road was paved. Um, but yeah, that's about it. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll go to a public hearing. Anyone who has any comments on this, please step forward with a microphone. Seeing none, we'll take it back to the commission. Oh, now I just lost the... There we go. Do we have a motion or discussion from the commission?
I should say, quick, uh, staff recommends approval. I should probably point that out.
I'll motion move.
Moved, uh, was that Lunskey? Moved by Lunskey?
Yep. I'll second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, item 3-3.
Item dash, item 3-3, replat of lot 1, block X of a replat of block 4 of Sunbeam Edition, located at 627 and 629 41st Avenue South.
All right, good evening, everybody.
Good morning, Glenn.
All right. Am I still sharing the screen? I can't tell.
No, Greta's doing that.
Okay, I guess Greta's doing it. Um, all right, uh, so we're looking at the property on the corner of Cherry Street and 41st Avenue South. Um, really, they just wanna split the lot down the middle so they could, 'cause it's an existing duplex, and they would like to have the option to sell them separately. Um, they'll be working with inspections and the fire department to bring everything up to code, um, and staff is recommending approval. I can stand for any questions, too.
And this is fast-tracked, so we only see it one time. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to talk on item 3-3, please step forward. Doesn't appear to be any, back to the commission. Any discussion or a motion? Mr. Buckey.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Moved by Buckey, second by Lunskey. All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, 3-4.
Item da, 3-4, public hearing, con... Conditional use permit for a contractor shop to be located at 1119 North 42nd Street.
All right, um, so here's another contractor shop. We're looking at the corner of 12th Avenue North and North 42nd Street, so 1119 North 42nd Street. Um, the property is zoned B3, um, but with all contractor shops, um, you have to have a conditional use permit for that area. Um, we feel as staff that it fits the area, um, to have contractor shops. And we feel it's appropriate, um, and we're recommending approval. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, back to the commission.
Motion to approve, second.
Moved by Coon, second by Maticek. For approval, I assume, and any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, 3-5, and this is a fast-track.
Item 3-5, replat of lot D, block 1, Wells Concrete First Resubdivision, located at 5030 Demers Avenue.
Okay, now we're looking, um, just west of Vittner State, along Demers. Um, this is a replat. Um, really, this is just as simple as, um, for financing to go through. They need to replat it to what it was before to be able to make the funding and financing happen. Um, and staff is recommending approval.
Any questions?
Yeah, what's going in there?
I can't see. Any questions? No, no, oh, go ahead, Frank.
No.
Yeah, I just wanna know what's going in there.
It's the same thing as before, it's still too north. The, this property is what too north has. All right.
Anyone else? Open the public hearing. Anyone who has a comment on 3-5, please step forward. Seeing none, back to the commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Lunskey. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, 3-6.
Item 3-6, uh, public hearing, fast-track, replat of lot K, block 1, Columbia Park 34th Resubdivision, located at 4554 36th Avenue South.
Ms. Edwardson.
Good evening. Well, we're west of I-29, south of 32nd Avenue South, the Mack Construction Facility, which has, um, added some new developments over the past recent years. Um, they're seeking to portion off, which is the first replat request, um, for an agricultural storage facility, which is a replat request, and then the subsequent preliminary item is the, um, clearing up some zoning. Um, and I can go through that next. The replat's pretty straightforward. The only oddity about it is that the access doesn't have public right-of-way access. It's got a private access through a, um, private agreement. With that, I could answer any questions on the replat.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone who has comments on 3-6, please step forward. Seeing none, back to the commission.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Mr. Coon, move to approve, Lunskey, second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item 4-1.
Item 4-1, ordinance to amend zoning map, rezone to include Columbia Park West Amendment 7, lots L, M, N, O, P, and Q, block 1, Columbia Park 34th Resubdivision, located at 4500 to 4300 block of 36th Avenue South.
Like I said earlier, this would be a cleanup of the property. Um, the contractor shops, um, a few years ago, we recently included that as an allowable use option to the B3 for Mack's, um, facility to the north. Following through with that theme, um, throughout the southern lots that's being replatted, as well as these fronting 36th Avenue South. You'll notice there's a small corner that's brown, like a B1 zoning is what it's equivalent to. Um, that's a holdover from previous replating, we're cleaning that up. Everything is being requested to be zoned B3 with contractor shops as allowable use with this zoning request.
Andrea, can we just allow contractor shops on a conditional use without there being one, the, one going in there?
There, so what we're doing now is allowing contractor shops to the PUD, um, essentially so that they won't have to come through a conditional use permit each time they were to, say, sell or rent one of these southern lots, should they so choose. We're writing it into as an allowable use, so it's, um, allowed by right. They can just go ahead and either build in the future, um, and then also rent to other tenants that, if they decide to rent them out, whatever they choose to do and how to pursue that, we're writing it in so they have that opportunity and option.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, there's no public hearing, so this is to the commission.
I'll move approval.
Uh, Mr. Lunskey moves approval, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Coon. Oh, sorry, just missed you, Megan. And, uh, Mr. Coon, second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Alex, I got something.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the previous, um, agenda item, it, it said something about agricultural storage. Is that's allowable use in, in B3?
Storage in general is. The fact that they specified agricultural, we don't really specify. We'd consider it cold stor, or not cold storage, but storage.
Storage?
Yeah.
Does it have to be enclosed?
Yes, we do have regulations in the B3 against outdoor storage, particularly with screening, things like that. Um, I don't, I think the project they're proposing, everything would be enclosed, um, within a facility.
Will I just have a big pile of corn there?
I don't anticipate that will be happening. Yeah, no.
All right. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item 4-2.
Item 4-2, ordinance to amend the zoning map to include the Beacon PUD, lot 2, block 2, renewal resubdivision number 5, located at 710 First Avenue North.
All right.
Ms. Edwardson.
So for this one, we're downtown at the former Townhouse Hotel site. Um, you'll notice maybe in the past months, um, they've been clearing the site, it's now cleared. We're now bringing forward the first piece of the, um, I guess, political approvals needed to get the project moving, which includes the zoning. Um, right now, they're zoned B4. We're wrapping this into a PUD, given that, um, it's a special circumstance with the extraordinary element of the plaza. Um, right now, you'll see in the attachment, they're proposing three, um, three mixed-use buildings that surround a plaza, um, element, and the PUD is written after the design standards. However, that plaza element, we did not write the design standards to account for a plaza element. It's something we never would've thought would've come through, though we're happy to see this development proposed. Um, but that's really something really hard to write a code for, even though we just approved that code last month. So, the PUD document, um, is meant to handle these extenuating circumstances, which is why we went that route. Um, so the PUD goes through, we've held to the design standards in terms of architectural materials, the quality, um, the design of the buildings, but particularly when it comes to the sighting of the site, um, setbacks, um, surface parking, even some of the plaza elements. We've varied those, as you can see in the PUD. Um, so that would be the primary difference between this and the design standards. Um, with that, let me pull up the rendering here. And it would be preliminary approval. Um, in addition, they're asking for our signage allocations. Um, within the B4 and design standards, um, certain things like digital signage is prohibited downtown, which, when you think about it in the pedestrian aspect, the streetscape feel for first-floor storefronts, you probably, we have not seen digital signs and like to maintain that more historical character. This is separated from the downtown core, so it makes a little bit more sense to allow flexibility with some of those sign standards, excuse me, um, which is why we're kinda looking at allowing the, um, type 2 event center signage, which allows for 225 square feet, uh, signage. Presumably, some of that will be digital. I, I think a large portion of that will be digital for this particular request. Um, they're planning to use, at least right now, the existing pylon sign that's out front, um, kinda towards Demers. The layout of this site is a little tricky for signage, and so we're gonna work with them to evaluate, number one, what square footage are they allowed on their buildings, um, and is that adequate? And then also this type 2 event signage, how does that play into things? Because when you're coming over the overpass from Demers, or even westbound, US Bank is in the way, you have a very short timeline for when you can view this site from Demers, the primary traffic area, right? Um, so we're looking at some different signage options to be able to highlight the public plaza element, um, as well as some other things. So, a little bit more details for signage will be followed through on final, but wanted to highlight that here because that is a main difference between the design standards and this PUD request. With that, could stand for any questions? They are looking to do preliminary. We are, have a parking study and traffic study underway. Have more of those details for you at final as well.
Mr. Maticek.
Just wanna follow up on the sign thing. The original sign that's out there now, right off of Demers, that'll be gone?
They, I believe would, um, that's still being explored, whether it would be gone in terms of they would reuse the poles.
Okay. So if they kept that sign, how many others, could they have another sign?
Not a freestanding sign. They can have wall signage.
They could have a ground monument?
No. They would be limited to one freestanding, whether it's a ground monument or a pylon. Um, we would limit that to one, but they would still have the option of wall signage on the building, both for commercial...
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just curious about how many signs they'd actually have, be able to have. If they decide not to use that one, can they pick another location?
They could, and I think I need to backtrack my one statement because it's a four-sided site. Um, I'm now thinking out loud, and I'm not so good on my feet, so let me bear with me on that one.
I'm okay with moving this along with preliminary approval, but I really would like to know what the signage is gonna be and where it's gonna be, period.
Okay. We will for sure clarify that between preliminary and final.
Because I'll make a difference next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Megan, did you ever...
I, I...
You're popping up here, Megan.
Oh, okay, well, hopefully I can, uh...
Go ahead.
...keep up to here. So, are, are we actually voting on having a, uh, a digital sign? Because I'm not supportive of a digital sign right there, when, when we're not allowing that in downtown.
Well, this is preliminary approval, so I mean, we're certainly going halfway towards approving it, um, but without getting full approval to it, but...
I would be supportive of the rest, but I, I don't think that's the place for a digital sign. And then where do we draw the line? If there's an event center in the, um, the building that's going up by the Edgewood Building, then do they get a digital sign because it's an event center? I mean, we're, we're just right there on the border, and I'm... I'm, I'm not comfortable with that.
I get the sentiment. Staff evaluated the capacity and the extent of the plaza area. We looked at how big of a plaza, um, at what point do we trigger this event 2 type 2 signage? Because the signage is what we've allocated to the Alaris and Ralph as their secondary signage. Both the Ralph, Ralph and the Alaris have larger signage, um, but they are also very larger-intensity facilities. Um, and so we thought the type 2 was, uh, a fair compromise. The project is being mirrored after the lights in West Fargo, which has a very large, um, signage element, which I apologize, I don't have here, I can look it up. Um, but, so that's, that's their, I guess, project framework. And maybe at this point, I should have them come up and kinda give you their vision for the signage, um, 'cause they might be more eloquent in speaking to that than I might be, so.
I think that would be helpful.
The, the one other thing I'll just bring up as, as they're coming up, um, Megan, specifically to your point, we did feel that this was much different than being, you know, downtown, right in the heart of the downtown, that this is kind of that, you know, it's, it's definitely a different feel of the road in this location than it is just two blocks towards the river, uh, where some other locations would be, so. We did, there is a signage change that happens right in this location, so I'll just interject that there.
If, if I can just make one point, like...
Yes.
To me, when I come over the bridge, I'm, I'm into downtown. To me, the New Hugo's is the downtown Hugo's. So... I guess my perception of where downtown ends is probably different than, than staff, because when I come in, isn't that the downtown Hugo's? I mean, where, where do we decide downtown ends and the rules change? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, the, this one, and, so you're, you're right, I mean, we're, we're gonna be closer a little bit over towards the, where the HB sound is, and we have some industrial in there, so, um, that's kinda why we think that this is a little bit different, but I know Lance is at the podium as well.
Before Lance talks, I'd like to just mention, like, we, we need to start thinking about digital signage a little different. You know, the difference of the quality of digital sign now compared to, uh, what it has been 10 years ago and the quality and what you can do with it. You know, it's not gonna be the quality of the DOT signs on the side of the interstate, which are re-pixilated. These are getting up to be, uh, photographic quality, so it's cheaper in some instances to do the digital signs in the long run if you're gonna be changing your print all the time, so I, I don't think we should be completely scared of the digital sign, but I think we'd have to make sure it's done tastefully.
Let's, uh, I think that this is a discussion that we need to have, but let's listen to, I don't wanna cut off our discussion, but let's listen to Lance, uh, give us his thoughts on it, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for some discussion. Go ahead, give us your name and, uh, your address, please.
Uh, Lance Johnson, uh, 3616 Hidden Circle, West Fargo, North Dakota. You know, our intention for the sign is to, to draw, um, draw notice to the, the public plaza. Uh, we utilize a sign in West Fargo... We utilize a sign in West Fargo. The one that is up on the screen right now is about a thousand square feet, which I don't think is appropriate for this space. I think the 225 feet would make great sense. You know, we want to promote the activity taking place in that plaza, and as the plaza is kind of set back from Demers, I think we definitely need a tool to utilize to be able to gain the attraction to the area. The main use for the sign would be to promote events that take place at the public plaza, as well as on-premise advertising of the commercial tenants within the PUD area.
Lance, would this be for motion? Or, I mean, you want to draw attention. I think what our concern is, is that you draw attention, you know, and by attention, I mean people's view when they're trying to drive. I mean, the distraction, I think, is what people are mainly concerned about with these sorts of things. So, what sort of things do you plan on putting on this sign?
You know, just, my assumption right now is we'd do like seven-and-a-half-second slides, which I think fall into the DOT standards for digital signage along the highway. You know, it'd be still images. We would not push for motion on these signs.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be a huge concern of mine if we had any kind of motion. Megan, did you have other questions for Lance while he's here?
Oh, not for Lance, I'm sorry. I have for staff.
Okay, is, and Jamie, did you, or Mr. Budkey, go ahead, did you have something for staff? For Lance or for staff?
For staff.
Okay.
Okay. So, I've got a few things that I kind of wrote down ahead of time, and I just want to preface this by saying, I'm very excited about this project. I have been since I first heard about it. I want it to succeed. I want it to, like, fit well and work with the neighborhood and for Grand Forks as a whole. I want it to work for the developer, which has done other really good projects already in the downtown. But at the same time, I have some red flags about the process here, so that's what I want to ask about. So, the DDRB is the first one. Did this go before DDRB?
No, because we're proposing to put this in the PUD district. So, it, we're taking it out of the B four and putting it in the PUD with the understanding that, with the thought process, that the plaza is such an extenuating circumstance that the design standards were never intended to address.
See, I disagree with that, and I think that, I think that this approach of the PUD is just incorrect. I don't agree with it. You know, we put a lot of effort, you more than anybody else, into the design standards over the course of like two years to implement them in the B four zone, and I think that this is essentially a huge loophole that we're creating and a precedent around it. So, what we're doing is, instead of going through the DDRB and the body that is like tasked with, and their mandate is design of buildings and spaces downtown, we're taking it out of their purview, and we're putting it into now a parallel track, planning and zoning, as a, as a PUD. So, it just completely cuts them out of the entire process.
I can see where it's taken that way. We, if you do read the PUD ordinance, everything does refer back to the design standards in terms of references and what to follow, except where we varied from it. So, I get that we don't have, I suppose technically, we could take this through the DDRB process as a variance for them to review and approve as a wholesale variance.
That's, that's exactly where I'm getting at, is like, there's the flow chart in the back of the document, right, that talked about, like, it goes, if there's a, if, like, one staff scores it, and if there are deficiencies, whatever you want to call them.
Right.
Then it can be, you can apply to DDRB.
And part of that, I do have to admit, is on staff. When we began discussions with the Beacon four months ago, we were not prepared to bring the design standards forward. So, part of that is this, we have been planning this kind of route, trying to get the PUD as far as possible, and then we made a big push to get design standards in and implemented. So, part of this is the different processes we had going, and you're right, we probably didn't marry those two up as best as we could have. The other piece of it from the staff perspective is the precedence that you're setting also with the design standards if we were to take this through the DDRB. The plaza elements and things like that that come with it, on a wholesale site this large, the PUD is also intended to address this. The special circumstances of not meeting a zoning district, it's a special use within the downtown. I don't think we'll see another public plaza downtown, and so, should the design standards, there's pros and cons, I guess, to both processes, but both are viable, but I can see where some may have a preference for one versus the other.
Yeah, I mean, just like, kind of where I'm coming from here, you know, why I spoke in favor of like, the concept of like a form-based code applied to downtown, like, years ago, I think, was like, that's how we start to codify, like, the latest and greatest thinking on like what makes good urbanism. And I think that the document that we ended up with was like a really good version of that. That's why I was so excited about it. And now, we're just sort of, we're just setting that aside. And, and I understand what you're saying, right, that like this is being like negotiated, right, that the development agreement between the city and the developer here still, like, you've gone through and applied some of them, taken some others off the table.
Right.
So, like you mentioned precedence, so let's, let's talk about that. If, if I owned the Lyons property, or the Edgewood property, or if I was eyeing the water-treatment plant site, those are all B four, subject to the DDRB and all those rules. Why would I apply through that process when I could go to city staff and say, you know, I don't think this is working here, I'd rather do a PUD? Like, this is, this is like a huge carve-out.
It is four acres plus four acres, and so, part of that, and to be honest, staff has had a discussion, should the water treatment plant be a PUD as well? Because of extenuating circumstances, because the city owns the property, we can tie certain zoning requirements through a PUD that we can't necessarily tie through a variance process as conditions of that PUD, as owners transferring the property. In that case, that would be the water treatment plant, but in this case, we do have a development agreement going with, which is a completely separate, that is between city council and the developer, but in which case, if there are conditions of that development agreement, it can be written into the PUD and the zoning ordinance as a condition to ensure that development proceeds as planned. But I'll let Ryan.
I mean, I'm on DDRB, and, you know, just knowing how that functions, that's one approval as opposed to this PUD requires two approvals plus a public hearing. So, I think, you know, following DDRB guidelines, plus we've got a public hearing, plus we've got two votes on this, by this commission, instead of one vote by DDRB at eight-thirty in the morning, when half of those people aren't paying attention.
I, I don't want to discredit the DDRB and their work, because whatever time you meet, they're a wonderful volunteer board. But, and I get the difference, we could have done that process. This was the process we felt was best at the time. I get where there's discrepancies in maybe going forward. The size of the lot, the development agreement piece of it, accommodating the different elements that we are needed to support the plaza, the operations of the plaza, things like that, we thought were better fit to just highlight in a PUD. But to your point of should the Lyons request a PUD, how would we say no, you have to follow the design standards?
Right.
Is a valid point.
And I would just, I would just direct us now, and Mr. Budkey, I don't mean to cut you off, but I think that that is a good point and a discussion worth having, but I think we might use our time better here this evening if we focus on if there are certain areas that we believe should be changed, because that's really what we're here to figure out. I mean, we are sitting more as the DDRB here. So, if there is something that, like Megan brought up, she's concerned about the sign, I certainly have some concerns about the noise. I know I've been hearing that. I'd like to talk about that briefly, if we could, but I think it's, instead of talking about process right now, I'd like to try and focus on how can we make this the best PUD possible going forward?
Well, there's one more thing. I mean, just because it was volleyed out there, we weren't looking to avoid the new design standards.
And I'm not suggesting any bad faith or anything, but functionally, that is what's happened here.
But four months ago, when we started with them, this wouldn't have even gone through DDRB. They've, this is very close to what the current standards are. It's, I, I think we can talk about the elements of it, but this was outside of the historic area. That, I mean, it was a B four, but it wouldn't have been going through design standards, as I understand it previously. So, they worked with us, and so, there was a process that we were going through with them. We had no idea when the design standards were going to be implemented when we first started with them, so I just want to kind of lay that out there as kind of why we started heading down this with them as well. We know signs are going to be different, there's no doubt. We aren't looking to do signage quite like this in another part unless they needed, unless there would be going through a PUD and have this discussion. So, I do at least want to touch on signage as well, that that is something different, so those would be the, you know, certainly something that we have to talk about, so.
And just to clarify what Ryan said, prior to the design standards being adopted, DDRB's authority only fell to the historic downtown district. This particular site falls outside of that district, so they would have not had to go through any kind of design review whatsoever. When we made that change last month, we took in the full B four to apply to that, so that's the difference he's talking about there.
Right, and very specifically, though, the, sort of the problem statement was, we have a downtown design review board, it has a very broad mandate, and it has functionally no teeth, right? Like, it, that was the problem that was being addressed by these B four reforms.
Right.
And now, like, so we gave the DDRB teeth, and now we're like defanging them.
The timing is not ideal, I will agree on that, but I hope it doesn't appear that we're defanging them. We are trying to accommodate the, what we think is a valuable development in the best way possible, and I can see where process could have been discussed.
Yeah.
And I would just suggest, Mr. Budkey, if you'd like to make, I mean, you obviously have the right here to make a motion, either to deny this or to require that it go before the DDRB, if you think, if you feel strongly about that. Personally, I would vote against it, but, I mean, you know, you certainly have that ability, and if you'd like to make that motion, I'll obviously entertain it, assuming we can get a second. But otherwise, I think we'll move on to anybody that has anything that they believe needs changing in this, or needs to be addressed in this. And Megan, we are going to come back to your sign issue, but anything else besides the sign?
Just to add to Reichert's thing, the process for, if it, if you were to make a motion to send it to DDRB, the process for that would be the board would approve it at a one-time meeting. If the board denied it, it goes up to city council for an appeal process.
Yep. Mr. Budkey, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I had a couple, couple other items here, because I, like, my, it sounds like, Mr. Reichert, maybe you did want to get into more of the design. I guess I was hoping to kind of like avoid nitpicking design, like, I don't know that that's, this is the right venue for that.
This is absolutely the right forum for that. That's our job, so.
Okay, well, so on the sign, since that's already been brought up, again, going back to last month and the B four reforms, there was like a very specific section in the staff report, right, about the lighted signage. And I, like, spoke in favor of that, right, that I felt staff was correct to hold the line that the downtown district is not the best setting for these like lighted digital signs.
Correct.
So, that's just where I'm, I'm coming from on that. Also, you know, when we talk about the downtown action plan, right, that was pointed out in here too, you know, that location at, you know, call it the base of the overpass, right, that has been slated, called out for, it's been like targeted as like, hey, this is a great opportunity for like, like a gateway element to downtown. And that's taken like big, you know, hairy-audacious form before as like, maybe it's a big roundabout, maybe it's like some big sculptural element. And I guess, I just want to express that I'm disappointed that the day has finally come that we get that gateway element, and it's a lighted sign. So, that's just an opinion, I guess. One more thing on the process, the parking and traffic study, because this, this does, again, relate back to the B four standards. Did the city request the traffic study?
I believe the city did request the traffic portion of the study, just impacts to, because they're proposing some different parking setups on First Avenue and Eighth Avenue, as well as any impacts to Demers Avenue, which DOT would require a traffic study. We did require the traffic study, and then staff also did ask for the parking study just to verify that this site can function with the amount provided on-site, and any overflow can be absorbed into our municipal parking system. We assume that the answer is yes, but that parking study will verify it 100%.
Okay, and so, that means that the city is like, is commissioned or paying for the study?
No, the developer is responsible for paying for the study.
Okay. I guess I'm like surprised on this point too, because like, parking in downtown Grand Forks is like the most studied topic, right? I mean, people talk about, you know, the studies that get paid for and completed, and then they just get put on the shelf and ignored, and I feel like there's been so many parking studies, and every one of them talks about like this overabundance of surface parking lots.
In every study, we usually focus on the core, and this being two blocks, which when you say two blocks doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're walking in downtown, especially if you're a residential owner, that can be too far to walk to a parking ramp. So, the, the site is highlighted here, and then our closest parking ramp is Central Ramp, which is about a two-block walk. We assume that, and even from a market standpoint, the developer understands what he can sell for these residential units and condos. He knows what he needs to provide on-site to be able to have a market ability for those apartments. It's not quite the downtown core to have that within half a block walking distance to a parking ramp feel, that we wanted to be sure the parking study accounted for what's on-site, because it, we, they are, I think they might be one stall per unit, I haven't done a full count. That's probably enough for a downtown system, but a parking study would verify that. So, it would verify the on-site parking, as well as do they fit within our district, or our ability to absorb. You add the additional element of a public plaza and the public events that would come with that, the study will evaluate whether or not the on-street can absorb that event parking, which we also have the ramp two blocks away, which would have more than enough capacity to absorb any event parking. Two blocks for an event is a legitimate distance. We feel it'll be an acceptable level of service. That may not be the case for apartment units, which is why you see some of the, which is why they're providing underground as well as surface.
Okay, so, I guess I feel like a little frustration over like when we're choosing to apply, it feels like, anyway, we're choosing to apply when this development is like in the core and connected, right? That's the characterization versus it's a little bit away, right? So, therefore, it's different, it's like a special extenuating circumstance, and therefore, the rules that apply to everybody else don't apply here. So, like, in the case of the sign, right, it's like, well, it's right, it's right near the bottom of the overpass, right? So, that means it's high visibility, high speed. Okay, but it's also characterized in here as being connected to the greenway and the existing town square. It's, it's connected enough that we need to, it's part of, it's going to be part of the municipal parking zone, but it's also going to provide a huge amount of on-street or off-street parking.
Yep.
Okay.
I, the bargain, the, the, the acceptable level of service for residential units is not the same for events in terms of walking for parking. I think our parking studies showed that, I can't remember the distance it provided. showed that, I can't remember the distance it provided or accounted for, but we do know there's a different, in terms of marketability, level of service for that. And so, with the, I can't remember the total number of units that are proposed. Lance, do you know that off the top of your head?
120 spots for surface parking, and then there's 32 below each other.
Right.
That's three units.
Okay.
There's about 250 parking stalls, because I can't do fast math. And then, how many units?
How, 72 in each of the three buildings.
21.
210.
210. So, there's a little bit more than one per each, which would typically is what we would see for marketability for, I think that's even what projects like the Lyons or some of those other larger developments that we've heard are shooting at least one per unit, from a market standpoint. That's what they know they need to provide to sell these units, and we want these units to be able to be successful. So, the municipal, bringing them into the municipal parking district takes away their off-street parking that we see on, like, South 32nd. The two best stalls per one bedroom, the two for one, I think it's, like, 2.25 for two bedrooms, which, 2.25, but, and then one per bedroom for three and above, which would be the normal parking required for off-street if you're not included into the district. So, we're bringing them into the district, you're right, we're expanding that, what we consider that parking area, because we feel like those normal parking counts would be over and above what should be accounted for, for downtown. So, that's why you see that aspect of it. Staff did evaluate this.
Thank you. Mr. Budke, anything else before I get to Mr. Maticek?
Yes, if I may. So, just one comment on the, the parking. So, epic place, there's, there's no parking on that entire block, off, off-street parking. It's, it's just the alleyway.
Right. There's some off the alleyway, but yeah, right.
So, now, since we've talked about the municipal parking system and the Chapter 14, I don't think this is necessarily relevant to this building particularly, but I want to throw it out there that this is a, a section of code that also requires reform. What it does, like, at the front end, it nominally reduces the number of parking that you'd be ordinarily required to provide off-street. So, that seems to be a good thing, right? But then, the way that that is calculated going forward is if you provide more off-street parking, which is at odds, again, with these, like, good principle, sound principles of urbanism articulated in our B4 standards, the more that you provide, the, like, the more your reduction in parking assessment. So, we-
Mr. Budke, Mr. Budke, I'm just going to interrupt you here. I'm sorry. This is getting, I think there's a lot to discuss in this, so stuff that we don't need to discuss at this meeting, that we need to discuss in another meeting, I think we'll just save for another meeting.
All right.
Is, is there anything else on this project?
No, that was my last thing.
We can follow up.
Thank you. Mr. Maticek?
Thank you. I hate to disagree with Mr. Budke, but I think a PUD is perfect for this type of a situation. This is a four-acre plot of land. PUDs, there's a lot of questions. This is a preliminary approval on this PUD. Please jump in if I'm wrong on anything here. It's a preliminary approval. The next one, we're going to see everything in that PUD. And once you lock yourself into a PUD, you have to stay with what's done in that PUD, correct? Unless you ask for a change, and you come here and go through the city council and go through all the steps. So, if we're diligent, and the city council's diligent, we'll go over this PUD with all the things we want in it at the next meeting. But this is a preliminary one. We're getting a look at it. We're getting to ask a lot of questions about what should be in here. And we don't know the answers right now, but if we give preliminary approval to this, I think the developers are realizing, we got questions. They're going to need to probably answer them, or get the signage, or have something so we know exactly what the parking is and everything. So, in my opinion, a PUD is the way to go here. This is preliminary approval, nothing, nothing's in stone today. We're just making preliminary approval to get them started to look at a PUD. And I think the planning unit development is the way to go here, but that's just one opinion. And if there's more discussion, if there's not, I'll make a motion. But if there's more discussion, Mr. Reichert, go ahead.
Well, go ahead and make the motion, Frank. We can still, we'll have as much discussion as we need. I think this is a, a good, interesting project, and I think this is the time to air everything so the developer knows what's going on. But I'll take that as a motion to approve.
Can I, can I make-
Is it just a verbal approval, Frank?
Can I make a, clarify my motion? My motion is to give preliminary approval to this, and I just want to do a, a little side note, is that if there's things here that I don't like on the next one, that doesn't mean I'll have to, I'll have to vote to approve it next time. But for tonight, I'm making a motion for preliminary approval to this PUD.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Kuhn seconds. Okay. Now, we're going to have discussion, and I'm going to let this discussion go, just so that, for the good of the developer and everyone else, so everyone's clear on what we need here. Is there any other discussion? I have some, but I'll wait.
Alex, I think Mr. Johnson did.
Okay, go ahead.
This one might be for Mr. Grasser. We've had smaller developments formed that have had stormwater ponds. Does this one not require a stormwater pond, or is that just not on this?
If, if I may, the, the stormwater requirements on here are probably going to be limited to our, our existing stormwater capacity on, on, on the surrounding pipes, because this isn't, there are other options than ponds. Sometimes those options get more expensive. Those haven't been defined yet at this point in time, and they may even still come up with some sort of a swale or something. You know, there, there is some green space to work with in there, kind of where some of the, the city utilities are. So, but they haven't specifically talked about a pond, and, and you don't necessarily have to. Pond is generally associated with the, an even larger development. It is downtown, so there are some unique interpretations that we have relative to meeting the state stormwater quality requirements.
Okay.
I'm talking around it a little bit, but, but it's, it doesn't necessarily have to have a pond.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Megan, did you have anything else?
Al has a question.
I'm sorry, Al has a question? Well, go ahead, Al.
Thank you. It, it might be an, an observation or comment more so than a question, but the, the question on signage, and, and there is a traffic safety concern, you know, associated with signage that you brought up. And I'm reading between the lines a little bit, so pardon me if I'm a little off-base, but I think one of the questions you have downtown on, on electronic signs is you kind of have a transition zone where you're not really commercial, you know, you're downtown, but you're not exactly downtown. I think the, the signage that I think we're talking about is, is standard signage, for lack of a better term. But perhaps, in this area, there, there should be some modifications of what would be, quote, "standard" signage, which would still allow electronic, but not necessarily that, that more commercialized, garish type of, of signage. And I'm, I'm thinking of a sign that, that I see in town now with the, the new technology, you know, sometimes there's at least one I know that, when they flash a white, and, and 95% of the sign is white, it, it just about sets you back on, on a really dark night. That might be an example of, you know, maybe, maybe there's a toning down of, of the color or something like that. I know that gets to be a complicated twist, but I'm just throwing that out for thought, is, is that it, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be all or nothing on electronic sign, but, but maybe if they're toned down to fit the, the PUD, might be an option.
Well, just to, you know, talk about that, I mean, we should be looking at the parameters, the quality of those signs, the, the intensity based on an astrological clock, so it's keeping up with the sunset, the sunrise. We need to be looking at more of those details, not just LED sign, yes or no. There's more to be talked about, about that. So, that's another, another day.
And boy, do we talk about that.
Right. Alex, I do have a question, and that is, if the Empire wanted an electronic sign because they are an event center, could they have an electronic sign on that same road?
It would have to go through a PUD.
It would have to go through a variance process or some sort of, to allow it. We've specifically written this particular signage into this specific PUD to allow this special circumstance. So, the general B4 would not be permitted by RIT.
It was discussed at-
And, and Megan, I think, along those lines, with the commission, as we're thinking about this, and whether or not to approve that, I think you should also think, would you approve a LED sign in those billboards that are just up the ramp, you know, 100 yards to the west? You know, and if, and if your answer to that is, no, I wouldn't approve a, you know, electronic sign there, and I wouldn't approve an electronic sign at Empire, then would I approve one here, and vice versa, if you don't have a problem with those? I mean, this thing's coming, and we, we have to think about it, but-
I do have a-
There is another billboard, just-
I'm disappointed with all the work that's been done downtown. I feel like this is a step in the wrong direction. I'm really excited for this project, but I'm not supportive of them not having to follow the rules of all their neighbors downtown, when, to me, you come down that overpass and you're downtown. That is, that is the welcome to downtown. And I, I think there's some sidestepping here to try to, try to bend the rules for, for this development that the other people, like the Empire, or Hugo's, or all sorts of businesses right there along the same road are going to be able to have.
I re-understand the, the sentiment, and just, so, from staff's perspective, we looked at that sign element as an extension of the plaza, evaluating that completely separate. Should the plaza not be here, we, I don't think we'd be entertaining this request for the event signage if this was three multi, or three mixed-use buildings, or some, or a repeat of the Empire was located here, the Hugo's, for instance. That doesn't have the accentuating circumstance of that plaza element.
So, if, if, and I recognize it's the cities, but one would say that there should be an electronic sign at Town Square, if we're, if we're basing it off the plaza. Or, we do have some redevelopment that's going to happen downtown, like the Lyons Building, other buildings going up, the water treatment plant. So, we may only have this situation today, until we have this situation tomorrow.
I think we would liken it to the Town Square element you just requested, given that the city owns that and hasn't proposed that. It hasn't been an issue that's come up. But we would evaluate them differently than the use of a mixed-use at the water treatment plant, or a mixed-use somewhere else. It's the plaza element and that Town Square event element that we were tying the event signage, from staff's perspective, to, to Claire.
But we don't, what these things will be developed as, is what I'm saying, and they're also part of downtown. We don't, we don't know. There may be an event center where the Lyons Building is. There may be an event center where the water treatment plant is. So, we're, we're acting like we're treating this as a separation from downtown, but we have a lot of exciting things happening downtown, and we don't know what they are yet. And for everyone who redevelops something and wants to have, bend the rules, to, to be able to better market themselves, and not stick with what people have worked very hard to, to put together, and, and very thoughtful process of what we want downtown to look like, to me, this just doesn't seem the right process. So, I'm-
Megan, I don't, to, to look at this, and, and I'm not asking for a commitment from you either way, but is there a compromise in there for you by changing the size, the hold time, the, you know, anything like that? Is there, is there something that you, and I, and I'm not asking you to commit to this now, but just things that we may want to think about as we go through preliminary and towards final?
I, I think if, if we're not allowing electronic signs in our downtown, to me, this is our downtown, unless, you know, maybe everybody else thinks that this is in downtown. To me, it's downtown.
Okay.
Is HP Sound, Jamie, is HP Sound downtown?
We are, we are near downtown. I, I mean, it's, it, you could, I mean, you could draw that line anywhere you want, but I, I think that, you know, maybe an LED sign at Town Square would be a nice addition. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. So, you know, I think we need to be looking past the phrase "LED sign," and we start to look at more of the details about this, because it's, it's not going to go away, and we just need to handle it properly.
Well, I think it's a good discussion, and I think it's a discussion that we need to keep having. Was, was there anything else on that, Megan?
Nope.
All right. Jamie, or Lance, either one of you, can you talk to me about the sound at, at this place? I mean, putting in what, to me, looks like something that's going to funnel sound right at the north end of downtown, and quite frankly, right at your house, Jamie?
Yeah, it's specifically designed to shoot right at yours, Alex, so it should be just fine.
Well, I guess I can speak to, like, in West Fargo, what we do is that we follow the sign, the, excuse me, the sound rules and regulations, which, which there, it's, I think, 80 decibels to the nearest residential place, or residence, see? And, and we control usually our events. We, we write them into the contracts now, what decibel level we can get to. We monitor the sound in the surrounding streets of our current plazas to make sure we're abiding by it. And I guess currently, that's, that's how we monitor it. Jamie, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, it just-
And New York and West Fargo is three-sided or four-sided?
It's three and a half right now. It's, it'll be, it's, building number three is under construction, but there is a parking ramp next to it. But in West Fargo, I would say, we do have residences outside of our development that are closer to, I mean, right across the street. So, a little bit further, I think it'd be a little bit further away here, even though I know there's stuff behind this development, but not where the sound is shooting.
Yeah, now, it's just the way that the sound system can be deployed. We can, you know, concentrate the energy into the people and the ground in the plaza. And we do have Demers, we have a whole train rail yard there, too, and, you know, there's pretty good protection there. So, it can be done right, and it can be done wrong, but we'll try to get the right people to do it in there, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything that you want to let the developers know? Mr. Budke?
Yeah, so, just a, a couple more things, since we, we are talking, I guess, in a little granular, more granular detail about, like, the site design here. Going back again to, like, this process, right, and I think what is sort of preserved by that, the B4 standards, right, in this, what I thought we were setting up as, like, the new DDRB process, I think that this gets away from that in some important ways. Really, those standards look at, how does a building address the public street, the public right-of-way? It has, I mean, it spells out exactly what that means. This project intentionally, and I grant that, right, it focuses that inwardly, right? Not toward the public right-of-way, but in toward the plaza. So, again, not, without having any more information than is just on the site plan here, I have some concerns that we are literally turning our backs on the public right-of-way, which is something that was, again, codified in the B4 standards. And then, we're building a big surface lot in a part of town that already has a lot of surface lots, an overabundance, according to numerous studies. So-
100% agree that our evaluation of the PUD focused and intentionally focused, setting up the feel of the plaza over the feel of the right-of-way. The design standards for everybody who probably doesn't know them as well as Mr. Budke, says that a, a building should be fronted on, like, for instance, Second Avenue, within 10 feet of the property line, from Eighth to their property lineup by Sixth. And then, buildings all the way around it is how the design standards are set up today, which is significantly different, obviously, because we have the surface lots around Second, and then a gap here on First. So, your assessment is correct.
Just one last, very last point on this. So, I, I was curious, right, about these standards, and, you know, I've been fortunate enough to work on some downtown projects recently, right? So, I did, like, a little exercise, just myself, and I, like, applied them to see, like, how they score, right? And they didn't- And they didn't score perfectly, right? Like, they were not, I think they're good projects, right, but they're not a slam dunk. And my understanding of the, those B4 reforms was that, should that happen, then the developer, the design team should prepare to go to the DDRB and make your case, right? If there's a big, if there's no alley access and there's a big transformer that you have to deal with, right? That runs afoul of the design standards for good reason, but there's a compelling design reason, then you can make that case to the DDRB. I, I don't think that that is the sort of, like, detail that is best, like, adjudicated in this once monthly meeting, when we're going to like revisit and rehash a PUD. So I, I know there's a motion, a second, I guess I'd like to make a, my own motion. I, I.
You can't make a motion, you can make, you can make a motion to amend this motion, or you can convince people to deny this motion.
Okay, I guess I will, I feel we should amend this motion to reroute this back to the standard process through the DDRB.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment. Okay, everybody feel comfortable voting on the amendment? The amendment is to make the motion to give preliminary approval, but to send it back to the DDRB. Is that your, is that your amendment? Or do you want it to just not get preliminary approval and go back to DDRB?
Yeah, I guess I'd look for some help from staff. I guess I, my feeling all along, and I guess what I've been trying to express is that I, I don't feel that, like, diving into design details is the place of planning and zoning. So I don't feel like this is where we should be talking.
From a staff perspective, we'd recommend you send it just to DDRB and give them their final action as normal process, because if you send it to DDRB and then still ask for it to come back to P&amp;Z, you're adding an additional layer of approval to a project that we wouldn't normally do on any other scenario. And so rather than to keep having them come to these various meetings and go through these approval processes, I would send it to DDRB and let that process play out as, as it's.
Mr. Budkey, Mr. Budkey, would you be comfortable on, I mean, Andrew, I, we don't have any, we would be able to hold a DDR meeting between now and, and next month, right?
Alex, I, I think this would have to go up to City Council, because the PUD has to be approved.
We would be taking it, so my.
What I'm proposing here now is that we give, and I'll ask Andrew if he's comfortable with this, is that we give preliminary approval, but then we send it to DDRB for comment. They don't have to do an official action, but it is a committee that could be asked to give an advisory opinion and a comment if they would, if they would approve it or not approve it or have some problems. Then we would have that report from DDRB when we come back for final, which would just help to instruct us. Is that, are you comfortable with that? Mr. Budkey?
No, I'm afraid not, because again, I feel like if we're thinking of precedence, right, and I, I don't think this is a slippery slope argument, right? Like, I think we're setting a precedent here. This is the very first development to come in the wake of the B4 reforms, right? And what we're saying is you can just do a PUD, right? And that's, that's like an alternative valid track to get your building permit approved.
So is my understanding.
What I think we'll do is, I think that we'll handle these motions separately then, because I don't think, because I think they're in direct opposition to each other.
Alex, can I clarify real quick? So I think what you're ultimately proposing is, Alex, I think you're still thinking to keep it in a PUD, whereas I think if we take it to DDRB, we would keep it in the B4, but have to go through a variance and just be accepted.
I think, I think we've got to get through the procedures of what we've got here. And I, I think what we have is essentially, are we going to give a preliminary approval or are we not? I, I'm going to strike Mr. Budkey's amendment, as I believe it's, it is, it will be handled by the action that we take in voting on the original motion. If it's not, then I would entertain another motion from him. That being said, if we, if, if he doesn't think that it's, his amendment fits in this somehow, that it's, that it's actually the opposite of this, then I think that will be taken care of. If this council decides to approve this preliminarily, then that would moot Mr. Budkey's amendment. So.
Oh, Alex.
Yes?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if I agree with that, but you are the attorney. We have a motion and a second on the amendment, so do we not have to vote on that? Because my vote will be different whether or not there is an amendment.
No, I'm striking, I'm striking the amendment because I don't think that the amendment is in order of this, because I don't think that the, because I think the amendment destroys the original motion. Now, should the original motion fail, then I would entertain another motion. Does that make sense?
Assuming that we completely understand what Mr. Budkey's amendment is.
Well, but it doesn't matter, his amendment doesn't exist. I've stricken it. As the chair, I've stricken his amendment.
I, I think you're, if you vote no, it's going through the DDRB, because then it's a B4 project that has to go through, so.
Well, if, if, if we vote no, then, then it's up to the developer and planning to decide what to do with it, if we vote no on the preliminary, as it stands.
So just to be clear, denying the motion, we'll send this to DDRB and keep it in B4?
No, no, if we deny the motion, this is done. And then you guys can do what you want with it.
She, she's talking about the process to, for them to receive approval would require them to go to DDRB, not.
You would be denying the PUD request, but they would come forward as a B4 zone district and ask for a variance through DDRB.
If they want to do that, they can do that. I mean, all I'm saying is we have a motion before us to approve a PUD preliminarily. If we should vote no on that, then it would fail completely and whatever people want to do from there is up to them. Go ahead, Frank.
Just a point of order, that wasn't in my original motion.
That wasn't?
The amendment that he made was not.
I know, right, right. So all we're voting on is whether we give preliminary approval on that. That's all we're going to be voting on, unless there's a different amendment.
I understand that, just wanted to make, clarify that, that was not part of my original motion. My motion was just for preliminary approval.
And I, and I will say, I think that we should approve this preliminarily. All right, I think we've discussed it. What we are voting on here is whether or not to give preliminary approval to this. It would still require final approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No.
Motion carries. Now, have been, because this got screwed up, I would entertain another motion if there is some other motion that you want to make. This is going, this has gotten preliminary proof. Mr. Budkey, is there any motion you'd like to make?
I guess I'll make a motion that this particular approval be routed through the DDRB.
But what does that, but what does that mean?
I think you need a vote, a motion to reconsider before you can ask for that.
Yeah, I mean, that, 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 that's a motion that I won't entertain. Because we've given this preliminary approval.
Okay.
All right. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on. 4-4.
4-3.
4-3?
4-3.
All right. Can I just clarify then? The motion was by Frank, and second, motion by Frank to give preliminary approval to this PUD and seconded by Pete, and with Budkey and Megan opposing.
Yep, 5-2 vote in favor.
It was 5-2 in favor.
5-2, okay. All right. Item 4-3, ordinance to amend the zoning map to include North Congressional PUD Concept Development Plan, Amendment Number 3, located in the 800 block of Thames Court.
Thank you. I'll quickly go through where we're located up here. It's on Gateway Drive and just on the west side of the interstate. We're on what's referred to as Thames Court. It's North Congressional PUD. We've got the air photo up, hopefully everybody can see this. There's one area here that's still undeveloped. It was set up, I believe, for two single-family and some twin homes here as you got towards the southern piece. It's similar to what was down here in, in the southern portion. The developer has these, I believe it's 10 single, 10 lots, still undeveloped, and they have a proposal for two 8plexes that would be built. Let me pull up the, the map of the 8plexes. So here we're looking, north is to the left here, on this side of the, the page. You'd get some additional units, as I said, two 8plexes, four units facing to the east, four to the west, and on the southern unit, again, four to the east, four to the west. The developer who's here, he does have a short presentation to make. From staff perspective, we've, we've recommended between preliminary and final, provided he, he would receive approval, there would be a requirement for a neighborhood meeting. This is going to be rentals in the middle of single-family area. It would be a change in the, a little bit of the dynamic of the neighborhood. Mostly, there'd be some added units. There's six units, so it'd go from 10 to 16. But in this area, it was a, a pretty specific layout, and what you'd get is, before you had driveways on this side, you'd also end up with driveways on this side of the road. And this is a fairly tight area for parking and that type of thing. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to the developer and.
Hold on, all right, before you go, are there any questions from council? All right, Ray, so.
Sorry, Alex.
There's going to be, I don't see where the parking is on this.
Okay. I'll show you that real quick, and I think Andrew had a question as well. So the parking would be just in the driveways? So these would be?
Okay, I see, I see, okay.
Driveway, driveway, driveway. It's a little bit hard to see, but these are, these are the driveways here, and then driveways on this side down here. And these would come up to garage units, and then you'd have parking in front of the garage as well.
Okay, and you said Andrew had a question?
Yep.
I, I just wanted to confirm, you said that this was, was this owner occupied or was this rental?
Previous.
No, what is this proposal?
It'd be rental, yeah. So this is not followed up with a plot, so they have no choice, they, they, they wouldn't be able to sell these individually.
They would not be able to?
Correct, yeah. You would have to, you would have to follow this up with a plot, and I'm not even sure if you could get separate units in terms of utilities, services into each unit to, to even plot this out. So right now, it's definitely looking, then the developer said that they're planning on having it be rental. But with that.
Any other questions for Mr. Brooks? Okay, Megan, Megan, will you open up?
And I will try to find his presentation that I.
For a short presentation.
Short, super short. And I'll do everything I can not to close out what I closed before. Is this it?
That's my presentation.
What the?
Is that the flash screen you're looking at?
Yeah.
Then there should be a source on the side.
It's not in there anymore. I might need to pop it in again.
Say, no, you pulled it already. Well, this is.
Well, I was working on this, is there any discussion from the committee? And I can't see anybody.
Yeah, it should be a little better.
Yeah. So kind of what we're proposing here is, like Ryan had said, it's.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Zach Scott, 1412 Cottonwood Street, Grand Forks. So kind of what we're proposing here is, like Ryan said, take the existing 10 lots, basically vacate the lot lines, and we're proposing two 8plex townhome units, similar to what we've been building the last few years. The picture I was trying to pull up for you guys is a rendering of what we're proposing. If you've been in the area, on the western edge, we have attached garage townhome units, and that's basically what we're doing with this. Two-story units, just mimicking what we've already completed. The reason that we're doing this is we've tried, we've built some of the duplex lots that were already plotted, and what we're finding out is that it's tight to work with, and, you know, we have a harder time selling those units as they are. And really, it just, yeah, lack of a better term, we've had horrible luck with them. So going this route, we're, we're trying to basically finish off the development and hopefully move on to some future stuff here in the coming years, but it's just, it's a nice way, we feel, to kind of cap off the, the northern half of that development.
Mark Coon, 418 Morrison Thompson. I'm the owner of the project, but anyway, really with this, this, these 10 lots in particular, they're, they're very narrow. This is a city-plotted lot, I believe, originally.
Housing 34.
For, yeah, Housing 34, promenade in Thames Court, basically. So really, we, we bought the development, development from some investors from various and tried to really bring that area up. I guess we're really the only house builders in the north end right now, so. But these two 8plexes, just these 10 particular lots, it's just harder to get, you almost, you can't fit a duplex on it almost, so it's, you just want, you want conformed to anything. So really, and, and really none of our 5plexes over there conformed to anything, anyway. It just, we, we stuck with the plot that was there, doing 5plex units. And these two 8plexes are, they're out of conforming, but everything else we've built over there is out of conforming as well. So really, what we're, we're going to do some stormwater retention. Mike Horn's going to help us with that, to get these, and these will probably be more legal than anything else over there. Well, in terms, so, and it's, we're going to, this is going to be a nice, I mean, we're going to spend almost $3 million in this facility, so it's, we're going to landscape them nice and try and improve the neighborhood. That's our main goal. And then having all the parking in the garages, in front of the garages, in the garages, really, everything else on that street goes to an alley behind it. I guess I could open the site plan, but I'm not going to touch anything. So really, I mean, we're just looking to improve the area, this finishes off this development for us. These front-to-back townhomes is what we could get to work out over there, and I guess as an investment standpoint, this made the most sense, and kind of kept the same, same jig that we have over there now. So overall, that's.
You say, you're calling it a townhome, but you don't intend on selling, you are kind of minimizing or anything?
It's, yeah, it just wouldn't work easily, so we're, we're just, we're just keeping them as two 8plex rentals.
Any questions for the developer from the commission?
So your goal, your goal is to keep the same look and feel of all the houses in there, these are just going to be, instead of being owner occupied, they're going to be rental?
Correct.
And I guess my only concern, and you talked about it, was just notification to the neighborhood. So that's my big concern, otherwise I think it looks good.
Yep, we haven't, yep.
Yeah, it's going to be, if they cleared getting approval from you guys, I think they were already looking at dates for public meeting, and so that, that's one of those where we do the invite.
where we do the invite, have them do the public meeting, kind of work through some of those issues, and maybe even, maybe they could get support from the neighborhood, and, like, we, I guess we had earlier tonight, actually get somebody from the neighborhood to show up and, and support it, those don't always happen, so, what I've let them know is, you know, kind of let them know that I think it'll be an uphill battle, but they've kind of asked to kind of keep going forward, and ultimately, it, it could be difficult, you know, come final, but they will do the public meeting outside, outside of our process, and then we have the public meeting at our final P&amp;Z.
Any other questions? Mr. Budkey?
Yeah, I hate to ask another process question, but when I click on the PUD that's on the GIS website, it says R3 for this, like, the entirety of the Thames Court, so, like, isn't this R3, like, what, what are we, what are we voting on exactly?
So, this area is, we had a setup with them, with the original area in terms of number of units, and so, I can go through all the variances that, I shouldn't say variances, the allowances that the PUD allowed originally with housing authority, that was back in '06, that, that was integrated as part of the approval, so, there's actually plans in there that show what the front setback will be on each lot, side setback, and, and where the, those allowances were given. Overall, the R3 was calculated for this area, and they didn't have, that's a 16-unit acre, typically, but in this area, they weren't able to fit what they're asking for, that it does require amendment to the PUD.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, any discussion by the commission? I would say I'm in favor if somebody makes a motion, but really, very concerned about the neighborhood, I still say, if I really hear much of any objection from the neighbors, I don't know how to give a final approval, because I think it is a huge swing for the neighborhood, and, yeah.
Alex, I, I want the motion to approve, just so that this can move on, but I'm, I'm with you on this, I had a little hard time increasing density after the fact, when there are other options and other, other things that can go on, I've never thought that that was the right thing to do to the people who have purchased the other ones that were built, so I'd be very interested to see what the neighbors have to say, and I'm, I'm a little wary of this project moving forward, but I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, second.
But, Mr. Luntz, all right, any discussion? We'll move to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And we are floor four.
Item four, ordinance to Annex Lot Three at Fourth Block One, Prairie Power Edition, located at the corner of 77 South and South 58th Street.
The developer has asked for this one to be pulled from the agenda, so we won't be acting on this one.
All right, five-one.
Well, five-one is the Land Use Plan Update, just quickly, because we know we've, we've been here already for a little bit. I'm just going to pull up the website, so, right now, we're doing the Grand Forks Land Use Plan Update, if you go to GF2050plan.com, there's an interactive map there now, if you click here, this will come up, you can either put in your address, not your address, your email address, or you can continue as a guest, so you don't have to put your email, but really, this is a map that asks for, what do you see, issues or limitations in the city, or growth opportunities, and we were just looking for more feedback, and we hope you would take time to look at that, as well as on the main page, I don't know if I let me go back, if you don't want to do that, at the very least, there's a sign-up for email notifications about, just keeping you informed of updates of the process. Probably next month maybe, or the next one after that, Scott with SRF, a consultant, is probably coming in and doing an update as well. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions? No, Cindy, thank you, Andrew, wait, sorry, Stephanie. All right, is there, who are the business? Intervene motion adjourned.
Nothing from staff.
Thank you, intervene motion adjourned.
Yes, motion.
All right, Johnson, Luntz, thank you, whoever's here.